A roll call for the open workshop Tuesday, December 18th. This is 5:36. Trustee Alonzo is here. Trustee Crew is here. Trustee Finerty is absent. Trustee Luanda is absent. Trustee Munoz is here. Trustee Ryan is here. Trustee Bellato is here. Vice President Wilbeck is absent. President Groderick is here. We have a call. I'll turn the meeting over to the superintendent first.
Thank you, Dr. Mater. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
On Wednesday and Thursday of last week, I conducted Marshall review meetings with all principals. I focused conversations on our 2017-18 ESSA accountability profile. Areas included New Jersey student learning, assessment participation, ELA, and math proficiency. ELA and math student growth, chronic absenteeism, and the graduation rate at the high school. I'm pleased to announce that we are moving from good to great. Our academic areas have improved for most schools. However, chronic absenteeism is still an area of concern. All principals came prepared with an action plan to address deficient areas. Our conversations included foundations as well as our morning remedial math program for students in grades four through eight. All principals are pleased with foundations and all have conducted walkthroughs to verify that our teachers are remaining true to the process. This month, I certified the 2017-2018 teacher evaluation scores. In November, we received the median student growth percentile scores. Our principals spent the first two weeks conducting face-to-face meetings to review the final scores with their staff members. The median student growth percentiles counted for 30% of the teachers' evaluation for the 2017-18 school year. However, moving forward, it will count for just 5%. Last year, the Board of Education Curriculum Committee worked diligently to address students not yet meeting or partially meeting grade-level mathematics expectations in grades four through eight. Over the winter months, the curriculum committee discussed policy 54110, which is the promotion and retention. We did this at our public workshops. Public, the policy 5410 went into effect in September. As we enter the second half of the marking period, Dr. Degnan would like to give you an update on the policy. Dr. Degnan?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko, and good evening, trustees. Last year, to address the number of students not meeting expectations on the mathematics portion of the state assessment, the curriculum committee began to explore ideas to provide additional supports to our grade-four through eight mathematics students and teachers. This plan is also in line with our board's goals and district goals to provide a multiple-tiered system of supports for our students. The committee began by reviewing the current policy at the time and noted that students in grades four through grade eight could actually fail mathematics each year and continue on to the next grade level, theoretically not passing mathematics through the middle school years. Algebra I is a strong predictor of college and career readiness, so it was important to the committee that our elementary-grade students were well-prepared for the rigors of the high school Algebra I state assessment. Changes made to the policy and regulation made passing of mathematics a priority. The regulation also added that a student at risk filing marking period progress report or failing report card number one with a failing grade of 69 and below would have to participate in an AM tutorial session. Attending the AM session 65% of the time is also a requirement to be eligible for summer school if ultimately not successful in mathematics. Students that receive a 78 on the next report card may exit the AM tutorial program. So bring you up to speed. Here is a list of frequently asked questions. How many students are currently enrolled after marking period one progress report? 313 students in grades four to eight after the first marking period. Currently, after marking period one report card, we are servicing 340 students. How many enrolled after marking period one without with a report card of less than 69? 63 students were added with a grade below 70 that were not identified in danger of failing. So again, our total is 340 right now. How many teachers are employed? Currently have 13 teachers in the morning and we're requesting to add additional two for Robinson School due to the nature of the bilingual Arabic and Spanish. That is a resolution we're putting forward tonight. An update on attendance. Are students taking advantage of this program? Yes, students are attending. 36 students exited the program after marking period one with a report card of 78 or better. So either they, they figured they didn't want to get up early or they changed something around to get better to get out of the. And some questions. What is the method of instruction? Is it online? Is it direct? Is it small group? Instruction is individual or small group based on student weakness. Students complete a continuous diagnostic assessment in IXL to identify their weaknesses and then small group instruction to close the learning gaps. We also continue to use IXL throughout because we have students in grades four through eight, so it's a five-grade level span. Is it differentiated for grade level? The skills are differentiated based on the student weakness. What are the challenges? In the winter months, we're going to face the attendance issue, I'm sure. And our next steps would be planning for summer school should that, those students not be successful. We would have to really, as a curriculum committee, start to investigate what we would do in the summer with a student's not successful. But overall, it's positive. If you have any feedback, I'd like to hear it. But that would be my report for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Degnan. As we move into 2019, Mr. Lopez and the personnel office have been working on items that will go into effect as soon as we return from winter break, such as staff development, frontline, and school performance reports. Mr. Lopez will now give you a brief summary of each. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. As soon as our staff returns from winter break on January 2nd, our staff will be focused on working toward district goal number two, which is to provide a multiple-tiered system of support for students in kindergarten to grade two. We have hired two multisensory reading specialists and we are looking to hire one more. Dr. Zuriki and Dr. Severance will be in district on the 2nd to provide additional training on RTI or response to intervention to our K-2 teachers as well as our principals. Response to intervention is a multi-tier approach to the early identification and support of students with learning and behavior needs. The RTI process begins with high-quality instruction and universal screening of all children in the general education classrooms. Other trainings that will be happening around the district on the 2nd are coding and design lessons, school nurse legal training from David Nash from NJPSA, teaching reading skills and strategies using novels, dating violence, and our teacher assistants will be receiving a full day of training using our online program Safe Schools. The technology department, personnel office, and the superintendent's office will be rolling out the frontline recruiting and hiring process in January, beginning with internal applications. Administrators will be trained during their January leadership meetings. District administrators have been working with the technology office and the personnel office to streamline the new school performance report, formerly known as school report cards. The format has changed and principals are now given ownership to highlight their school's accomplishments. All information will be submitted to the NJDOE by the end of January. As we move through each of these initiatives, I will continue to update the board on our progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. The business office is preparing to open budgets for the 2019-2020 school year. Mr. Matt Bolden will discuss the process as the district will continue with the zero-based budget model I implemented last year. Mr. Bolden?
Thank you. Yeah, I've been working hard the last week building the backbone of the budget. Second year, as Dr. Wonko pointed out, modified zero-based budgeting. It should be ready for the administrators and budget managers to start inputting their data when everyone gets back from break. All the details that they entered last year are in there, so they'll need to tweak things, prepare briefs for anything that was currently unbudgeted in the current year and present those to the cabinet. Salaries are pulled in for next year based on the contractual obligations that we have next year. So we're making good progress the last two days. I've got everything cleared off. So I'm just going to focus on the budget my last two days in the district. It has been a great two years and I was glad to have helped move us forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd also like to thank Mr. Bolden for his work and really helped us get through this difficult transition and things are very much on track. We wish him the best and hope. Yesterday, I participated in the Tommy Bears program at Henry E. Harris Community School. Mr. Tom Coughlin, CEO of the Bayonne Community Bank, made a generous donation to the Bayonne Education Foundation for this initiative. After reading to the pre-K students, each child was presented with a Tommy Bear. The BCB and the BEF will be presenting Tommy Bears to every pre-K student in every Bayonne school. It's a terrific program and I just wanted to share there is a science behind the connection children have with their teddy bears. In our society, separation from the parent and the child is inevitable, whether it be for financial reasons or there's a one-parent home or it might be that both parents are out working or they need a babysitter at some time. But at some point, they're going to school. Preschool is a great time to catch our kids to make them ready for their school career to follow. The moment of separation, they call that transitions, and the teddy bear they call a transitional object. And the idea is very simple. The parent cuddles, holds, nurtures, takes care of the baby. The baby is now getting ready for school. They then do that transference to the soft cuddly object, which is a teddy bear and has a face, and they make a connection with the parent. And then that makes it easier for them when they are in the school setting or away from the parent. So there is some science. You can go back and look in the 1950s when this was first named as a actual psychological benefit. And it's very interesting. So I'm glad that the program is in effect. It was very heartwarming to see all the students grab their bears and hug them right away. And we appreciate the, Mr. Coughlin doing a greeting to the children. Did an excellent job. So that concludes my report. Do I have any questions for me? If not, before I turn the meeting back to Mr. or Dr. Mater, are we doing my other presentation now or you're doing yours?
You could do that first.
Okay. I am asking the board to consider a plan I have to actually prepare one of our employees to go back to the teaching realm. I'm speaking, of course, of the current president of the Bayonne Teachers Association, who has not taught for over a decade. In my opinion, he needs to be brought up to speed with new teaching techniques and pedagogical theories. When students are coming out of college now, they have training in various types of techniques and programs, even in the Danielson model. I need a teacher who will hit the ground ready on September 1 and not be learning all of these things at the expense of our students. My suggestion is that I would pair him with experts in the field that we would select, teachers that work right here. One might be an expert and he would rotate maybe a month at a time. One might be an expert in real-time, which is a system you all know we use for our recording. He can then become familiar with that. Another teacher might be an expert in the creation of student growth objectives or SGOs. He has to know about those. The Danielson framework, as you know, he has to have a background in the four domains, get that training, and go through the Danielson model so he is prepared on day one. Also, on-course online portal for accessing curriculum and the creation of daily lesson plans. Again, back when he was in the classroom, everything was done paper, pencil, pen and pencil. Now everything is computerized. Professional development would be necessary for him as well in the use of smart boards. Every classroom in the math department has smart boards now, so I think it's important he learn how to use that device as well. Google Classroom, I don't know if he has experience using that, but most high school math teachers utilize this platform and I would want him to be aware of that. I don't know if he knows about the Khan Academy, which is our online support for students. It's another thing that our teachers could share with him. All of this training would not cost us any money, but it would prepare him to be the most effective teacher he could be in September. Also, he has to be familiar with the Chromebooks we use because that's our tool here. So the last item is probably very important. Might have been the first item. He needs training as a test administrator for the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. This is what formerly was called PARC. Every math teacher, grade three through 11, must give that test, must give that assessment. So I have to make sure he is prepared to do that. Lastly, and I don't know if this would be something we would do or not do. We would have to see based on numbers. But as you remember, I reported about, I think it was 5014 was the policy number. Fourth grade through eighth grade must pass mathematics. We are providing teachers in the morning to tutor students who are not passing mathematics because they will not be promoted without that requirement. He is a certified math teacher. Could be utilized as one of those teachers in the morning for tutoring as well. And that's my suggestion. Dr. Mater?
Trustees, if there's any discussion on this item, it has to be done out here. Mr. D'Angelo served me with a letter that any discussion on this topic is to be done in the public. So if you are going to talk about this, now is the time to talk. Ask questions to the superintendent. If not, I will move on.
Can I just add one question?
Sure.
I agree with you with what you said, except if the discussion gets into the pending legal matter, that then would be appropriate for executive session.
What's the pending legal matter?
A charge was filed in 2017 regarding the board's resolution, which provided that if the need existed, that Mr. D'Angelo could be returned to the classroom under the terms of the collective bargaining agreement. The collective bargaining agreement sets forth precisely what he can and he can't do.
So what's the options? What options do we have besides that whole plan?
Sorry, Trustee Luanda, I can't hear you.
What's the options? What's the options? What options do we have?
The option is to not take my recommendation and then he will begin in September with three days training during the summer and learn at the expense of our students who are assigned to his class.
Otherwise, it's learn at the expense of the city because for a whole year, he's just learning.
He is now in a position where he is not in the classroom. So how is it a law expense to the city?
Because who's paying for him to learn for that?
Right now, we pay for half his salary and his association pays for the other half.
And then in September, we're going to pay the whole?
In September, we would pay the whole amount. And he will be at the top of the scale. So you have a top-of-the-scale teacher who doesn't have these skills and is learning them on the job.
Dr. Wonko, with all due respect, you can't learn it on the job. You have to know before you go into the job.
Thank you.
And SGOs. That was the current. SGOs, doing tiered, doing different SGOs who are teaching different levels. It can be complex, but the person we're talking about is a math major, I'm sure. That person would not have a problem. I had a problem adjusting and I was currently employed. But SGOs are very, very difficult. I think that's not something you learn on the job. It's student growth objectives. You're going to be predicting. I believe the date is October 15th. Dr. Degnan, is October 15th when you have to do your SGOs?
October 31st. By October 31st.
Okay, so just so everybody understands that not everybody on this board is a teacher, a camera teacher. An SGO, you're just going to look at your class and based upon your prior tests, you're going to say student growth objective. Your objective is that 75% of your class, depending upon, will improve. Unless you're familiar with what the assessment is, what, what you're basing your improvement on, I don't know that you can just kind of like just guess. Well, okay. 75% of my class will improve. Based upon what? If you're not familiar with the PARC or you're not familiar with the state assessment, how can one do that unless you are familiar with the assessment process and what student growth objective is? There's more. To Dr. Wonko's point.
This would lead him into the program. He would have a half-year to learn everything and master it. He's a very intelligent man. He could learn all of these things. He could give us another five years of instruction.
Absolutely. So somebody would be responsible to mentor?
I would assign him to a specific teacher for a month at a time who is an expert in one of those fields, as I mentioned.
Got it. Thank you.
Dr. Wonko, by my idea, Mr. D'Angelo is a valuable member of our district and I believe if it's not a violation of his rights, I think we'd be more than willing to participate in the program.
I think we should be very excited about the opportunity.
Well, can we ask him if he's willing to do this program?
I'm not. I explained to Dr. Wonko when he told me when I got the rice letter.
I'm sorry. Could you pick that up or you want me to sit in?
No, I guess we should. Let's get this on the record. It's two parts. I explained to Dr. Wonko when he told me about this, I said I have no intention of coming back in September. I intend to retire. But I wasn't prepared to put my papers in today and there's several good reasons, which I don't know if you want to hear. We've had teachers that put their papers in this early and it was tragic for both of those teachers. If you want to hear the story, I'm sure some of these teachers, Bonnie Moreno was one of them and I can't think of who's in the. Yeah, Marie McQuillan was another, was an English teacher. Both of, both highly thought of and they, against my advice, instead of asking for a leave, a year's leave, personal, they were going through a tragic time. They couldn't think clearly, so they put in their papers. The one that put in their papers was doing so so she could stay home with her husband who had stage four cancer or severe cancer. We told her, don't do that. Put in for the year's leave. She just couldn't think clearly. She was that upset. She resigned. Three weeks later, after she resigned, her husband died. She had no salary from her husband and she lost her job here. When I petitioned the superintendent at the time to give her her job back, absolutely not. Marie McQuillan had a tragedy in her family. I think it's going too far as to tell you what happened. But she had a son and a daughter-in-law. Something happened to the daughter-in-law. She died. There were two young children, I believe. Marie said to me, I have to resign because my son needs my help with the two children. They were young. I said, Marie, don't resign. Put in for a year's leave of absence personally. Again, if you knew the whole story in and out, she just couldn't, she just resigned. Approximately two months after she resigned, they passed a bill that said if you had 25 years or more, you got full medical for life. She had 24 years, eight months. I petitioned the superintendent again. Please hire her back. You don't need to hire her at the maximum, wherever she was. Put her at step one for two months, just so she makes the 25 years. Here's a woman that was in, I can't tell you her age. It's happened a long time ago. But she had no medical then. It wouldn't do it. So what I'm saying to you is someone, you could all say to me, well, if you're going to retire in September and we know it, we won't do this. We'll let you finish your timeout, run the union, and walk away. Well, I'm not going to, my union says, and I've been telling teachers for years, don't, there's no need to put your papers in six, eight months early. If you want your pension on time, you gotta do it. We know exactly when it, you know, I might have to put them in May 1st, June 1st at the latest, which is what I intend to do. So all of this training does two things. It takes me away from running the union, but more importantly, as most of you know, there's going to be a transfer in leadership in this union. There's a lot of stuff to transfer, believe it or not. I've been running it for 25 years. The new people have no experience at all. It's going to take me the next six months in addition to representing the 800 teachers. I don't have time to be trained in something I'm not going to use. Now, the only issue you have is do you believe me when I tell you I'm going to retire? Well, normally, I'm a man of my word. If you can show me otherwise, I'll listen. But that's why I can't put my papers in today. But do I intend to put them in? Yeah. Could something happen? I guess. Well, Dr. Wonko said, well, I had offered to get trained May and June if I don't have my papers in. You're saying I'm not an idiot. How hard could it be to? It might be a little hard, but I can't imagine if every teacher in my district can do what needs to be done, I think I could at least meet the minimum standard on that. So I don't want to go back into the classroom. I don't want to go back in for one period a day. I don't want to go in for one period a week. I have too much to do. And while we're on the opposite side of the issue most of the time, I'm telling you to do my job is a full-time job. And that's just going to get in the way. And I also feel it's a punishment. But I don't want to get into that either. But you might be able to understand that because we do clash, unfortunately. Maybe the new leadership won't clash. Hopefully not. Hopefully, they can do a better job than me. But that's, that's my position. I don't want to go back into the class and that's the reason. And for the record, I never asked you to retire and I told you. No, you did. You said I have a good four or five years left. And, and I. How old do you think I am? Forty-five? Yeah. Well, if I were 45, you're right. I would go back into the classroom. That's not the case. But I have an obligation to the students in our district. I understand that, doctor. And we will be paying your salary if you're doing this. We won't even be paying, we'll have to pick up that other 50% if you're doing this. So we'll be paying 100%. Yeah, we're giving you over $50,000 a year to let me do full release. So if you put me back into the classroom, you lose $50,000. Or we have you as half-day being trained.
Or we have you as half-day being trained.
Well, we don't have a half-day situation with that. It's either full day or nothing. That's the way the union deals with it. I don't have, I don't have an option of being part-time in the classroom.
Well, if you recall, when I was principal here, you had a half-time teaching and half-time union.
Yeah, but you didn't get any money for that.
So that's what I'm saying here. That could be an option, half-time, half-time. And as I told you in our private meeting, if you had something that came up union-wise that you had to go to, we would make that accommodation. I just need to make sure I'm getting the best teacher possible for my students in September. We'll be paying you top scale at that time. Top of the scale.
Well, I can assure you that if, if I thought May 1st, I had an intention of coming back, I'd come to your office, I would tell you. You could schedule those things then, and you could double the time. And I think, I've, I've talked to some of my colleagues, and I asked them, "How long do you think it would take me to come up to speed?" Two weeks, they told me. Now, they may mean two weeks full-time, but still. I'm going to be able, it's not going to be a problem. What's a problem is I can't run the union and do what you want me to do. And I have a piece of paper that says I'm full release, and that's in court now. If the people in the state did their job, we would have had a decision, I wouldn't be standing here. But we can't get a decision out of those people. They can make decisions, though, to tell the teachers to take their desks out of the room. That makes a lot of sense, and I'll, I'll address that at the board meeting. But I can't get it, we're, as, as Mr. Clark said, it's a year on this one item. Can't get an answer. So they can let you hang out there forever, instead of giving us some direction. I stand on what I said. I don't intend to come back in September.
I thank you for your remarks. Anyone have any questions I'd like to ask me?
For me?
This would just be full PD, right? This would just be full PD, right? Uh, Dr. Wonko, this would just be full PD for him, right?
Yes, he would, he would not be, unless we go to the other plan I mentioned, where I need more teachers in the morning for tutorial. Then he'll actually be doing tutoring, which does not require the SGO component and all the other things I was speaking about. Remember, grades four through eight must pass mathematics.
Yes.
And as we go further and further into the school year, I expect we will probably get more and more students in that morning tutorial.
Yes. But that has nothing to do with whether he does professional development?
No, that's a separate, that's a separate track I'm speaking about, great.
Your recommendation is the first plan.
And perhaps a second.
Together?
Might be. If I need all hands on deck because we need help for our students, that's what I'm going to ask for.
Is there something I'm missing here? President of the union is the president until what date?
July 1st.
July 1st. Okay.
And I understand he has to make a transition, I understand he has work, union work to do, but also remember, we are not in negotiations, so that's a chunk of time he is not doing.
Phil, he is the president of the union until July 1st.
Correct.
So no real, concrete decision has to be made on the president's part of the union, nor our part, until we get something official in writing.
On our part, we can do something. If he then wants to grieve it, he can grieve it, but he has to perform what we're telling him to do until the grievance is settled.
But why, there's no way you can do part-time professional development at some point?
No, well, it thinks, there's no way I can make a schedule to do that. When teachers get in trouble, they have to go to that school. When I have a problem, Mr. Copaz can tell you, "I'm down in his office at least four times a week. I'm down in the business administrator's office four times a week. Tomorrow, I have a, a meeting with a lawyer, all of that. So if it was tomorrow, what would I do? I can't meet with the lawyer on the union business?
No. There's no way you can work with Mr. Copaz, Dr. Wonko, just open some sort of schedule because the flip side with Dr. Wonko says, "September rolls around, and for whatever reason, you decide you don't want to stay." Now, all of a sudden, there's no accountability, you have to learn on the job, everything goes south at that point from the district's point of view. Trying to find a half a loaf here.
When you hire a teacher, that starts in September, how many days of orientation do they get?
The new teachers that were, new teachers we hire and get a three-day orientation, but as I prefaced before, they are right out of college. Most of our hires from Delaware, for example, have an excellent education program. They know all about Danielson, they all know how to use real-time.
You assume that when you hire-
I know that because I hired from that college, and I did it in the other districts. What are the four domains for the Charlotte Danielson?
I have no idea.
Okay, so they learn that in college. We have to teach that to you. I, I understand you weren't in that role, and I'm trying to make it easy for you, but my first priority is that you're ready to teach the students. And the ones coming out from college have all the new techniques down already when they get here, so they can do their training quickly. Again, you've been out of the classroom over a decade, you haven't taken an education course, where I would guess four decades.
Correct.
So I need to bring you up to speed, that's all.
He did say that he doesn't put his papers in by May 1st, he's returning in November 1st.
Wait, that one?
That one?
Would you study hard?
He's not a sucker.
He's not a sucker, man.
I see that being a problem. I really don't. I don't think it requires me to be that old.
What if we work with you, when you have to do the union business, you could step away from the training and then come back to the training?
Which is what I told him at our first meeting, and again today.
The most you can require of me is to do three periods a day. That's the part where to teach. Now, with training, I guess you can say it's the same thing. I'd have to reschedule everything every day. In the morning, I go from Jersey City to West New York to Tom's World. Do what I have to do up there, drive from Tom's World to back into Bayonne, they get here maybe 11:30 and so on. Then I have to meet with my vice president till 12:30. Then I get to eat some lunches, and then I have to do the rest of the stuff in the afternoon. Takes the full day. If you're going to stop me in the middle of the day, no matter where it is, I have to get from where I am to go for an hour, I don't know how much training he's assuming he's going to give me, I'm going to get, but-
I'll work the schedule with-
It's my, it's my opinion that that's not going to work, and all it's going to do is hurt my union and hurt me. I will be gone, I, I don't even want to say that. Listen, if I got to go back in the classroom in September, and I can't rise to the level I'm supposed to, file a pension charge, do whatever you like. I, I have the responsibility of being able to perform in September, if I can show up in September. Let me worry about that. I'll take training over the summer if I have to. I'll have my vice president train me one-on-one. He knows how to do all of the things that Dr. Wonko wants me to do, and in addition, he happens to be a math teacher, so it would be directly aligned with what I would have to do. I would, because we work in the summer. Union works during the summer. If I sit down and you can show me what I have to learn, I'm sure I would be up to speed in September. But, listen, I, I take it, I interpret this as a punishment. I have two charges against the board, I'm sure you're not happy about those charges, but that's the way this works. And I think that that's a retaliation.
I, I need, I need to answer here because the board did not direct me to do this.
No, I know. I didn't say that.
So how could it be retaliation?
I think I'm through different channels. All I'm saying is that I was, I had full release, and it was never a question for 14 years. The question only came up when you became superintendent, and I questioned you on that. That's when we filed the pay for. If we had gotten a decision, and if the state did their job, I wouldn't be arguing the case. If I had lost that decision, that would have been it. I lost it, but I didn't.
We're in December now. Would everyone feel comfortable if we tabled this till the next meeting? To give you more time to think, and give the board members more time to think, it brings you closer to May.
It does. But, can I say this for, for the record? Whatever you, I don't know when, when January is, but-
It comes right after December, right before February. Now you know why you need the training.
I had to change my personal life for this meeting today, because the board changed the day you were here. Sometimes I can't do that. And in January, I have a few things, so when I look, I might not have come in January, now I'm forced to come back here in January to go through the same thing. So let me put on record, my argument is the same. I plan on retiring, but I won't put my papers in prematurely for the reasons I stated, and you can check those things out of what I said to see if it's true. We also, NJA does not advise any of its members to put their papers in early. They tell them to wait, two months is fine, so I'm wait one month and then put them in. You're going to get your check regardless, you may not get it on August 1st, you might have to wait until September, but you're going to get all your back money, so it's not a big deal unless you're living that close to the deal. I'm not. So it wouldn't matter to me if I put them in June 1st. But I wouldn't feel confident the world doesn't change drastically. And I've seen that happen to me, so I'm a little bit reluctant to make decisions prematurely. And I don't like the fact that you're not letting me run my union, which it led me to do for 26 years, you know, interference. Now, for some reason, I understand what you're pointing at, but I can learn, I can get up to speed in two weeks on my own during summer.
Let me ask you this.
Why?
If we gave you two weeks now, and you could prove to me that you're up to speed-
I can't give you two weeks now, then I have to stop-
Then I stand, then I stand on what I said, and I, I think we're just going around in a circle here. If everyone is comfortable with tabling this until the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, then I turn the meeting back to Dr. Meda, and thank you, Mr. DeAngelo, for your comments.
Mr. Broderick, I'll turn the meeting to you, because we had invited one of our employees to have 10 minutes to address the board, as he is here. I have a few items, I could wait, I'll let him go first.
As I remember last meeting, uh-
Mr. Wyatt, one of our teachers, came up and, at several meetings, he's kind of upset about the fact that we have a three-minute limit, and I thought maybe a good compromise would be for Mr. Wyatt to come to the workshop, and he has something to tell us that takes the 10 minutes, that this is a good time for him to do that. So I invite Mr. Wyatt to come up and give us his 10-minute information.
The clock started, and you gave it.
Does the clock start now? Because he's not up here. No, no, it started. Started, started.
It starts, stops, and stops.
I'd like to, is this on? Hello?
Yeah, it's on.
Hello? Okay. Uh, I'd like to thank the board for giving me this time. I got a few things to give to you, just so you can look at it later if you wish. This is the packet of points, the one I'm going to read is in. If you wish, you may peruse the other points, I suggest, "The Yes It Really Is" and "Say It All" might be interesting. I maintain that you find out a lot about a person from looking at their writings, okay, because they're, they're in print. This is an article by, um, Carl Raveli, he's a, he's a string theorist, he's a physicist, and he wrote a very interesting book. This is the last chapter, and it's the best, uh, it's the best description of what science is all about and why it's so powerful. And the upshot of it is, science is powerful because we're never quite sure we're right. We're always looking, we're never, we're never sure we've got all the right answers, and that's pretty important. So, um, I'm a problem solver, and you can't solve a problem until you understand what the problem is, until you can describe it. And so I've been thinking about, a lot about, what is education? What am I really supposed to do in my job? And I found this quote from Albert Einstein, and it says, "Education is not the learning of facts, but the training of the mind to think." And then I, I modified that a little bit, and I said, "Education is not merely the learning of facts, but the training of the mind to think about those facts." So I'm training people how to think, my vehicle is physics. I do not teach physics, I teach people how to be physicists, which is, is very important. So I have two options. I can explain to you, um, my thinking about something, or I can just, in the business meeting, ask you very embarrassing questions, but you won't understand why I'm asking them. But what I'm trying to get at is, I'm trying to introduce new information for you to consider. I'm not a gadfly. I'm not just complaining to be complaining, but I want to try to get you to start to think about, maybe differently about things. I don't want, I, I don't demand that you do it my way, I just want you to think about it, and I'd like very much to just be heard and considered. And my experience, and all of my experience of, in Bayonne School District, I have never been heard, and I've never been, you know, engaged. So I'm going to read you a poem that gets at the, what are we really, what is, what are we really trying to do in the educational field? What is bedrock? Because, and I read this poem every time I begin to wander and not understand what I'm doing and being confused. It, it centers me. And it's from, it's from a collection of works called "Meditations from Eighteen Wheels." It's about truck drivers writing down their thoughts. And truck drivers have a unique experience in this country because they drive all over the country, and they meet all kinds of people, and they, and they really see what the United States of America is all, is all about. So this is the poem called "Destiny." And if I get emotional about it, uh, it, you'll understand. Somewhere across America, I ride a great, deep-throated, throbbing beast through wondrous land with eighteen wheels a-spinning on ribbons, ribbons of concrete stretched from sea to shining sea. Many have gone this way, immigrants on wagon, on wagon wheel pulled by living beasts, others on thermodynamic beasts of iron and fire, an iron horse that was no horse belching smoke and steam as it traversed the land on slender rails of steel from sea to shining sea. Some see as they traverse the land an adversary, a hostile land, but what I feel is the indifference of the land for us, the being ones, the thinking ones, the feeling ones, the wanting ones, the demanding ones, the selfish ones, the unseeing ones, the unseen ones, the spoken ones, the dumb ones. This land calls forth freedom, for though it bounds us in its reality, it does not dictate who we might be or what the possibilities. Through the land sound the words of Tom and Abe, magic words, immortal words, transforming words, words from the past, words in the present, words for the future, that grant the speaking of other words, that tell of possibilities not yet so that they may yet be so. In this confluence of land and word is born a destiny, not decreed by some omnipotent, but built by flesh and bone and blood, in indifferent land from wondrous words that outshines mere divinity. The agents of this destiny live all across the land, the brave, the free. They sail on Freedom Sea in their proud ship, possibility. None stand astern to contemplate the wake, but every man jack of them, of ever gender, age, and creed, is in the rigging high to be the first to spy the far country that lies beyond horizon's reach across the bow. They have no instruments, no word of those before, no, no compass, chart, or map to guide their way. They do not mind and always reach the dream they cannot see beyond horizon's reach that is their vision. How this can be so, I do not know. It is enough that it is so, for they are the hope of the world, these brave, these free. Perhaps it is bravery of the free that guides them on their way toward destiny, and then again, perhaps they need no guide and make it up along the way. They only tarry but a while on newfound land to plumb the possibilities, and then on they go, across the Freedom Sea, toward what lies beyond horizon's reach that's filled with possibility. Audacious folks, these brave, these free, inspired by land and word, they dare, they dare to dare to speak of things that aren't, that cannot be, and make them so because they say it shall be so. That is their destiny, these brave, these free. If you will, if you dare, you can meet them everywhere, in every eye you spy, hand you grasp, word you hear, heart you plumb. If they beckon you aboard their proud ship, possibility, to sail the Freedom Sea, as sure they will, be brave, be free, for they beckon to a destiny that breaks the grip of past, makes you free, makes you brave. I thought I only hauled life stuff, but now I know I haul the precious stuff these dreamers turn to destiny. Oh, come, oh, come ride with me on my great, deep-throated, throbbing beast, on eighteen wheels a-rolling over ribbons of concrete stretched from sea to shining sea. See what I have seen, feel what I have felt, meet the brave, free. We shall ride toward what possibilities we can speak, urge onward, ever onward, by wondrous indifferent land, with immortal words from our immortal past ringing in our ears. Aboard our faithful steed among the other beasts, we'll ride possessed through amber waves of grain toward purple mountain majesties, sometimes through rain and snow and fear, sometimes in the clear, sometime in blackest night, sometimes in bright daylight, sometimes toward setting sun, sometimes toward riding sun, but always, as all those- toward setting sun, sometimes toward riding sun, but always, as all those brave souls before, always into the possibility of possibility. It's America that is our destiny. So...and I've written to you before about, you know, this great country. We have a great country. It has flaws, but I wouldn't want to live anywhere else in the world. And there are two ways you can lose your freedom: by force, and you can exchange it for some shiny bauble that doesn't matter. I come from a military family. My father and his two brothers were naval officers. My son works for the Navy in the underwater warfare laboratory in Rhode Island, and my younger son is a helicopter pilot in the Navy. So they've all handled the force. It comes to me to make sure that I educate my students so they can think, and they will never trade their freedom for some bauble. This is serious business, folks. We cannot allow this petty stuff that goes around. We've got to teach people how to think. We've got to start thinking about how to do that. In our brochures, we talk about that our job is to teach people how to critically think. What I notice is that I don't see any critical thinking about how to teach people to critically think. And our students...you know, I'm really glad that we won't let people out of elementary school unless they pass math, because that's been a terrible problem. So we're...but we've got to move faster. You know, these children are...it's a real-time situation. We can't wait five years to solve somebody because we're going to lose five years of people. And so I really want you to start thinking about, you know, I'm in the trenches, in the mud, in the blood. That's what counts. I hear stuff...I hear stuff described to you, but that's not the way I see it from where I am. So all I'm asking you is to start to listen to us. You don't have to listen to me. There's plenty of people in this school district that will tell you what's really going on and what you need to do and what's being distorted. And so I really...all I want you to do is start to listen and investigate. Be interested. Be suspicious. Be like Carlo Raveli, not quite sure you really understand what's going on, even if you do. I have a sign in my room that says, "Nothing is as it seems. The more certain you are, the more likely it's not. Question everything." And then I ask my students, "What's the most...what's the most important question to ask?" And they give me all kinds of answers. But the most important question to ask is the one you're never allowed to ask. And in this district, we're not allowed to ask certain questions. So that's...
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt.
Thank you.
I hope maybe you'll invite me back, since I...three minutes is nothing. And I tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to start asking very embarrassing questions in my three minutes. But I don't want to do that. I would rather have a chance to have a discussion about it, okay, rather than just be defensive and emotional and stuff like that.
That's good. Thank you very much. All right, Mr.... Can I talk about this now or in the public meeting regarding the search?
Open workshop.
Okay.
And obviously, Mr. Clark will let us know we're overstepping anybody. It's round here.
All right. Just to bring everyone up to speed, everybody was pretty much on board with myself in that we were truly hoping that we were going to have Dr. Wanko for one more year as our interim superintendent. We put in the appeal. We wanted...we approved...everyone here approved to put in the appeal. That appeal doesn't look good at all. It's...I think our chances are slim and none, if I'm not wrong, but...
State's not giving any.
State's giving none at the moment. And so it kind of puts us a little bit in a different light. I personally was hoping, and I think many of you here were thinking, that we'd still have his guidance for one more year and all the things we're moving forward with, that we would continue on that. That being said, we are in a good stead, though. You know, we're not behind the eight ball as far as doing this. We would still be right on track. We've got information from the School Boards Association as to how to do this, really applications and, you know, interviews, things that wouldn't start till March anyway, so just to give you...that's basically what I'm doing, is that as disappointing as it is that we won't have Doc back one more time, and I don't understand why they won't let us do it, but it turns down to, I think, some finances and other matters that the state and the school board associations are looking at. So that being said, we are in pretty good shape as far as going forward, and so I just wanted to give you a heads-up on that.
You can't put the appeal again?
Excuse me?
You can't put the appeal again?
I can't hear you.
We could...we could put it in again.
But the state has told Dr. Wanko that there are forty interim superintendents right now.
Forty percent of the state are interns now. They are planning to remove the cap on the superintendent's salary, so as you know, if you're an interim, you're not paying into the pension. So they're hoping that this will self-correct.
The money and the pension.
Yeah, so it really has nothing to do with the fact that you're Dr. Wanko, has everything to do with...
Money.
No, I'm serious. It has nothing...
Money.
It has everything to do with the money. It's not that you're not doing an effective job at some...you're not helping out Bayonne. It has nothing to do with that. It's not a commentary on your performance. Rather, it's a commentary on what's happening in the DOE as opposed to the pension. And they're just not willing...they, meaning Pension Department or the DOE, is not willing to renew...
They will not renew anyways.
Anyone. It's not Dr. Michael Wanko is... Sorry. Well, I wanted to make that clear to anybody who may be listening to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just say, I think we've been very blessed with trying to make the change we did, is that we're actually blessed several times, bringing in Dr. Wanko as our interim superintendent, bringing in Matt as our accountant at a time when things were very difficult. So, I don't know, we must be saying some prayers in the right places sometimes, so, but let's see.
Okay, I'll turn it over. I'll start with the agenda. There's an addition to communications. I labeled it as assorted. Obviously, the topic is indoor percussion. It's attached. What I'd like to ask the board is in the future, I'd like the board members on any topic to please remember to go through the superintendent and/or the board president. Because if we do not follow that basic guideline, we run into this problem where an individual will answer a citizen, and then it becomes a trail of emails back and forth that some trustees are aware of, some trustees aren't aware of. So I'd just like to clean it up a little bit so that in the future, we're all on the same page and everybody can participate. And I think that's enough that needs to be said or made. All the other communications you have, the curriculum committee met. I'm going to ask to turn to A12, which was...came in after our meeting, and it's just another staff...actually, we did go over this. There was a typo with the spelling of one of the names. So that's why I asked that we re-sign that. And if you turn to A28, that is a new resolution. It was in your packets that I sent home. But basically, this is the elementary AM math tutorials, and we're adding...you see the highlighted names to the list. Okay? And that completes the curriculum. I'm sorry. Yep? And if I can just get a second, and then I'll be moving ahead to finance next.
Dr. Maida, I realize you didn't sign at the meeting, so I'd like to...
We signed half, so I'll get them re-signed. Yes, we didn't get them all signed.
Right. So who moved?
Trustee Alonso moved. I just need to sign.
I'll sign.
Okay, so I'm putting out all the resolutions that possibly you haven't seen. B1 was done at committee. B2 is our acceptance of reports. The reports were sent online, and you have your board secretary...a copy of your board secretary report in front of you. Our claims and accounts were finalized. B4 was appropriation transfers. There's no change since the copy that I sent home. Five and six were done at committee. The next couple of resolutions, B7, 8, 9, I'll talk about the resolutions out here, but at the finance meeting, a question came up in regards to our own service, our own drivers. Mr. Clark has the answer for that, and we'll discuss that inside. So B7 is a route that's being canceled. B8 is, we're responsible. It's an emergency route. We're the last known address. Go ahead.
Dr. Maida, I'd also like to bring out the finance, that trustee Alonso had a question regarding one of the vendors on B7. So is it possible that we can get him that answer as far as...
I think when we're inside, we can ask that question again.
That's part of that?
Yes. I think that needs to be handled by my attorney, who was my payload. B9 is also an emergency contract. Once again, it's a special education student that we're responsible for for being the last address. And then B10 was discussed at finance, but we didn't sign it, and then we changed it with a typo, so I need to get it re-signed. O&M is going to service solar panels, and that was handled at committee.
So the whole purpose of this resolution is to...we have these beautiful solar panels on top of the school, right? After time, they split, they kind of move, relative vegetation comes through it, and the connections are not as stable as they should be, which is leading to a decrease in the solar input that we could get, and, you know, so we actually could be getting higher rateables when we sell back our solar credits. The whole purpose of this is to tighten up the system and actually get more money out of the program. And I think was it trustee Alonso, someone brought up the fact of possibility of getting our...no, it was President Broderick about getting our own employees to do that going forward.
One of the ideas that came out of committee from the trustees is that even though we're hiring this service, our people will shadow them and hopefully learn everything they need to learn about repairing and servicing our own panels.
Right. So next year, we want to spend an additional $23,000.
Great idea from the committee.
Two years down the road.
All right. Not hearing any questions. I'll move ahead to personnel. Personnel committee did meet. There's a revision on C1 from the committee meeting. The last two names were added to the resolution, so I'll get that re-signed. Resolution C2, committee had. There were some last-minute additions to that from the committee meeting. And also, C3 on coaches, there were some last-minute additions from the committee meeting. Any particular questions, we'll deal with that in a second. C4, various positions. There was one name added from the resolution that was sent home. C5, I have one person being added to home instruction staff. And at this time, C6, I'll turn it over to Mr. Copaz for our monthly harassment, intimidation, and bullying report.
Thank you, Dr. Maida. In accordance with Bayonne Board of Education Policy 5512, during this reporting period, five incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying have been reported and investigated at the following schools. One incident at Philip G. Roome, one incident at Mary J. Dunne, one incident at Harvest Man, one incident at Washington Community School, and one incident at Nicholas Orresco. In all five of these cases, there were no confirmed evidence of the investigated acts of HIB. Strategies, resources, and remedial measures were implemented. All documentation is being retained by the school anti-bullying coordinators.
I'll move ahead to Resolution C10, which I need to get re-signed. There was a typo in someone's name. C11, C11 is new. It's staff members making best use of Google Classroom. We have one staff member that'll be attending that workshop. C13, after-hours go partying. We talked about this at committee, and then we talked about this at finance. So we never did get it signed, though, because we were asked to bring this to finance and make sure that the budget was warranted back. That'll take us all the way to C17. I have an agreement with Gerald Pinkin, professional development, and that's being paid by the grant. C18 is agreement with Dr. Ed Albert, also for professional development, also paid by the grant. C19, Hackensack audiology. We're responsible to the agreement, and you'll see it has to do with one of our classified students. C20, Hackensack University Medical Center, wireless hearing assistive technology system for a classified student. C21 is St. Joseph's Hospital. It's an OTP or PT evaluation for a student. 22 is St. Joseph's Healthcare. It's a feeding evaluation for a classified student. C23 is a placement of a student, Essex Valley School, and you'll see the monthly tuition rate, and this is a start date of December. And that is it for outside. Mr. Broderick, I think we have two other items. One is over here. I'd just like the board to know tomorrow is our deadline for the board vacancy. Going to hand out a packet of what I have so far. The committee has informed me that we will be...I will be scheduling interviews with the candidates on...candidates on Friday, starting at 3 o'clock. Starting at 3 o'clock. Tomorrow at 10 o'clock is the deadline for submissions of our board vacancy. There's one other thing. Bob, look at I...is he doing the moment of silence now or... Any other questions or items from the trustees? If not, I will adjourn the open workshop. We're going into a closed session, legal, personnel, and negotiation items. It is...it is 6:45.
I would like to conclude.
Hold on, then we're going to not adjourn the meeting. Turn that back on. Excuse me.
I would just like to adjust Mr. Bodine. I want to let him know and everybody here for the record that he did an outstanding job during the short time that he was with us, and I'd like to ask the trustee for a round of applause from Mr. Matt.
Matt, I'll see you next week.
So at this time, we'll adjourn the meeting to a closed session, legal, personnel, and negotiation items at 6:46. So at this time, we'll adjourn the meeting to a closed session, legal, personnel, and negotiation items at 6:46.